Okay.
What's that?
I'll keep your name.
Okay.
It's on the notary page. It's the old.
It's what's.
The one more members. At the bottom.
Were you, where were you? Were you in Portland?
I was there last week.
Last week? Like very, I was there. Two days ago, I was there.
I tried to fish. How was your air?
Of course, I grabbed it.
Yeah.
Were you like?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. It was really interesting.
At the early August.
Close friend, friend. As a flop as we've been here.
Oh, what day?
Oh, no, no, no. Well, every, three times a year.
I was really proud of that. And now I want to get something like that yesterday.
And it's just completely like.
It was one of the.
Send everyone home. I don't even know where. That one of the, there's one of the. Headache. But it's like at the end of the square, like we just popped through. Yeah, and like, and. Which is.
I hope they maybe I'm lost.
We're after this, nothing here. And then.
We all didn't do it like first.
They call us a little.
Brown.
The pictures.
Good.
There are some intersection point that like. You wouldn't even think of.
Right. Yeah, I saw pictures of. Machias. This is like.
So the house is now in the area. You know, every restaurant on Friday is. Really, they have to be more than that. Yeah. In Wisconsin, too. And she, well, she's grown.
Uh, we were down walking around during the snowstorm. Like red ones up on that parrot where it looks like.
Yeah.
And it was like winter, winter landed and then like forty eight hours.
Yes.
Yeah, because I, I drove down.
Yeah.
She probably. But. A lot of.
People there in this brain. Here we leave my.
We don't have a CEO report over here.
White, white burger.
I'm sorry.
Who's had that one? It was like football. You know, like, I just need a part of that thing. I gotta try, you know, all these people last night are seated in Australia. Even that. You were like.
Yeah.
There's two dogs.
Yeah. I'll, I'll give you all the deep.
Oh, yeah.
It's all very exciting.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Even. Same. Even for you. All, yeah, all of their. They're playing the same half. So they, they left fishing. They just want to get a vest. That's a kid, they weren't in a vest. It's a lot from now. I saw that this summer there. Trying to fight, fight other things at all. And it's had to be. Off. Like, hey, you'll say.
I saw one flying around. It's really good. Yeah, right on his head.
My problem.
And you're trying to drive away from his nest.
Twenty years. It's not used to be. Oh, they're good. So. Daisy. Beginning. It's very crap.
We're not losing it at all. Just very busy. This thought some of it.
Lastly. Where you're. That was in the world. Still, uh. But. I saw this come back. I tried, I was trying to bring it up earlier. Not a map picture. On Facebook. At somebody Ted's. And he are in for him. Selling. That picture long. I'll add just. You're generating. All of a sudden, so. Yeah, it's a little fun to see what it meant coming up. So find that, but. It's like. It's awesome. It's legitimate. So.
I think. You know.
It's like a picture. Like a, like a painting.
Is it, is it like, is it what they call a bird's eye view?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, like if I, when I grown out that way, I look back this way.
I've seen that, that same ad.
It's always on there.
So back to the, back to the meeting.
Yeah.
It's something, send people here.
Yeah.
And, and they, you know, it, it looks like you were flying away all the time. I mean, the building would be there.
Are we really good?
They should really work. I think so. We have.
I, that's what that was never, you guys had.
Yeah.
They want.
They just have. Sandra. Yeah.
Another thing, guys.
Yeah. We have.
All right, thanks, everybody. We'll open the meeting at six thirty one. We have been minutes from the last meeting.
Right.
If they're not ready, we could just do that next time.
I'm pretty sure I left that. We move on to you, I'm not sure, just the theme. Um, yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, this is to the person on Zoom that is showing up as me. Can you please identify yourself either in the chat or verbally? Not seeing who this is. Or I wouldn't say.
I, in the waiting room or there.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Thank you. It is. The gentleman that was probably meaning. Sitting right behind Randy. Yes.
You have anything to change here?
Um, we said three minutes. Nothing changed.
Just sort of saying, next slide.
This is a weird one, this is a.
All right, we'll move into the public comment. Eric.
Uh, first thing is, we've got an open spot on the planning board for an alternate. Dana Allen is interested in getting on. And to my understanding in the bylaws. She can be appointed by the selected for. To that position. I just need confirmation and.
Yeah. If that's okay, so we just present, present.
Um, I can go do an appointment. Quickly enough. Maybe towards the end or something before we leave. I'll do an appointment. That's good.
Does she need to be here?
No, she'll just have to come in and sign the oath.
Yeah.
As far as process goes, do we normally? Post, post a position or anything?
Um, I haven't crossed this bird yet, so I'm not sure.
When did the position become open?
It's always been, it's been open since the new session because Cindy Rana got done as an alternate, so we had that open position.
Oh, so, so this is an alternate member?
It's an alternate member. It's not a, a board member. I believe it's, if it's a board member, it's got to be. Moved.
Yeah.
By where it's an alternate. I believe the way it reads is the select one is going to point. Mid-session.
Sure, I'm just thinking that we should probably post the position as open.
For at least, for a little while, anyway.
Yeah, when is your next meeting?
Uh, the twenty third? Twenty eight, third, I think. It's not a regular meeting, it's a, it's. Solar ordinance or.
Yeah.
I think it's a solar ordinance, so it's part of that.
Is there, is there any objection or time pressure that would? Prevent us from doing even a short posting publicly and then even having an intermediate meeting to make that appointment, just to.
No, I mean, I, I would say that it could probably be part of regular business of the next scheduled meeting, I would think. If it can have ambassador, not great, but if it needs to wait until February meeting to, to.
I have a, a very unified question. So what is the role of the alternate then?
They sit. They can't, they do not vote unless there's a forum and somebody has to recuse themselves.
Okay, that's what I thought.
They can step in and. And vote, but they're not voting.
Okay.
But they can participate in, you know, the day-to-day business of the plan more like a solar ordinance, she could actually take part of that and work on that.
Right.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, what did you say the next meeting was, the twenty third?
We, we have on the twenty third that's to, to work on solar.
Okay. May, maybe we could post it for like ten days and then if we needed to have just an ad hoc meeting to make the appointment, then we'd be agree to do that. Yeah.
Then we'll just have to figure out how to do it more than one person is interested. Or, or how to be voted on or.
No, I think.
I think you still make the appointment.
Leave for me, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So post it for ten days and then.
Um, all right, and then there's another topic.
Yeah. I have a little bit of an issue with the fire department pumping out basements. Biggest one is liability. I would assume that if you look at. Your insurances and everything for the fire department, they are not covered. To pump out basements, according to most of the other area towns. Due to the fact that there could be. Electrocution issues in a basement full of water. Their firefighters are not allowed to pump out basements. They can give you a pump. And you can do it, but they cannot pump out the basement. Second thing on that is. I don't believe the town. Should be paying the number of firefighters. Pump out a basement. Um, that last storm, there was seven of them with two trucks. Pumping out one basement and then they go to the next basement and then they go back to this other basement. So all day long, it was going back and forth. All those people getting paid.
Yeah, it's a.
And I'm, I'm all for helping out the town. I've got, I think, two or three new some pumps, new some pumps, ditch pumps. People have come to me and asked me, hey, can I have some pump? Yeah, yeah, go ahead and borrow them, do what you want to do. But I don't think it should be brought upon the town to be responsible for. A lot of these people that are perfectly capable. Of buying me some pump. And putting it in so that the not, fire department is not getting called up to do that.
Yeah, it's a, and, and also very much connected to the exercise going on right now to understand. Uh, what the department's being called for. How, uh, and what resources the town is expending on what types of calls. So thanks for bringing that up. Also, no, so also the. That event. Falls under, I think, emergency type of plan, so. All that money. To be recouped, so.
Is it a guaranteed recoup?
It's not a guarantee, so it goes back to where they should or should not. So we'll, we'll address that, but be, because of the amount of. Uh, damage done within the county, like, we are going to apply for. All that expense to come back, because we did burn up two sub pumps for the town, so we're also going to apply for those. You know. We gotta talk about, you know, situational, because, you know, if we weren't under that situation, then it would be on the town. So, you know, your, your comments are, but just to make sure that it's in the public knowledge that, um, we are applying for all those expenses to come back to us based on the emergency. So, thank you for that. So.
Yes, and I understand the situation that was. But, so if it is emergency, but this.
But the appropriate.
You know, and there's a lot of heavy rainstorms and the same people always call the fire department to come pump out their basement.
Yeah.
And there's always. A whole crowd of them to pump the basement out. And if they're facing budget issues. That's a good place to start looking, little, little things like that, keep adding up.
Yeah. Yeah, like raising the issue. I think on the. On the liability issue, we can, we can look into that and work back at the next meeting.
And I do know during that last heavy rainstorm, I had. A couple of calls down Guilford Avenue. That the people had called me and I was working up in Tallahassee and I said, well, I can't get there right away. I said, when I get back down that way, and they called the fire department. And they called me back and said, the fire department says they cannot legally. Put a sub pump in somebody's basement for that reason.
Catch it. Did you have a comment on the side?
I just wanted, I mean. Not, no disagreement on. We didn't have power. During that rainstorm. So those people, like. No risk of electrocution. And they, they, you can give them all the sub pump you want. They don't have power, they can't get it out.
Well, it takes if you have that sub pump and then power to come back on and.
Oh, agreed. I mean, I got a sub pump, I did, you know, my basement got six inches of water in it and. I just, I, I know that happens once a year, so, so everything, my basement slipped it out.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm ready for it. I totally agree with you. Cuts can be made, but I just wanted to make sure we do that. At least the one, my, one of my, you know, couple houses up, I saw the fire department there. Four times at sea. Yes. I, I would estimate. Four times during that rainstorm to empty it out. Yeah.
Great, thanks. Um, Gwen?
Yes. The historical side over the past four or five years or so. Has done a lot of work on the cemeteries. From physical work, you know, having the stones repaired to. To placing the stones where they go, I mean, that, that the old church had cemetery, they were all piled up behind the church, so we figured out where they go. And, uh, you know, we had stones cleaned. Eoxied back together in some cases and. And also we spent a lot of time on records, you know, trying to get the records updated for all three cemeteries. And we found some pretty embarrassing things. People buried in the wrong lot. Stones put on the wrong lot, you know, one lot that were excavating to bury it and found a casket already there. Uh, some, you know, and there was. Several years where people were buried, especially in the, in the inside cemetery. And no records of it were brought to the town office for. To record. And part of that was because there was no sexton at the time. And, and even though the. Uh, the monument people thought there was, and so. It was a tremendous gap in the, in the records and we've spent a lot of time trying to correct that and. And Marty and, and Jade have been a tremendous help on that. And. And it's in a lot better shape now, and now we have a sexton and that's a huge improvement. Uh, and. Monson isn't the only town with this issue and as. Some of the work we did on the whole church at cemetery, we received an award and, and went to a meeting to accept the award and, and heard similar stories. About other towns. And the town of Thorn dyke had a similar issue and they formed a cemetery committee, which a lot of towns around already have that. And, and the purpose of the cemetery committee is to make sure you've got all the documents you need to. The bylaw to whatever, whatever you're going to do to bury somebody, to bury her or whatever. And. I think it would be a good idea if the town considered forming a cemetery committee. So we can just, uh, make sure things are at least from here on, especially are done right and that, uh. Everybody's aware of what's going on and, and. Right permits and so on and hand and stuff. I would just recommend that town consider that.
Yeah, no, thanks for all the work that's been done over the last years. It's really incredible and it's. Not just a matter of record keeping, good practices, but it visually has really improved things, so. That has not gone unnoticed. Uh, I think on the, on the committee side of things, I would say. Sounds good to me. Best to come forward with the people who would like to do that, you know, and a couple of times in the past, we've discussed forming committees. And then we had trouble getting people to sit on the committees, so, uh, but the, but your, your team is very well organized, so I, I trust that that. Won't be any issue, so I, I would just say that would probably be the, the next step. Have some of these committees like. Does it replace the sexton's responsibility? Or is it, is it always just in like parallel or?
Yeah, it's in parallel.
Does it take over some of their responsibilities?
Yeah, and. Uh, and I'll talk to some of the other towns that have. Uh, committees, I know Dover does and.
Cause our sexton does have, like, is paid, right? Yeah, so like, what? I don't want to do is have the committee, like, basically do the sextons.
It would probably be like the CEO and the planning board, you know, kind of working collaboratively or.
Yeah, I mean, there's several steps to. You know, the only thing we didn't find is nobody come back up out of the ground and came to life. There's several steps.
But you know.
We buy in the lot and figure out where the lot is. The new cemetery, the lots are not numbered very well. People have been buried in the road. You know, so there's a lot of issues to deal with that. And the sexton really should be part of that committee.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh. So there's a lot of communications required between the. You know, the company that makes the stones, provides the stones and, and the sexton and the. And the town office and. Lot of, lot of records to keep and, and the dogs to. Keys to be crossed and eyes to be dotted.
Do we know if we, if the town has ever had a cemetery committee?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know.
We did, when we talked to the town of Thorn dyke, they provided us with all their documents that they've developed over the last couple of years. You know, that they use and. We have those and, and some of those may be able to just change the name on the top and that works fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if, if there's like a. A proposed charter or, you know, roles and responsibilities for the committee and who would like to be on it, then the board could certainly consider that.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, all right, public comment is closed. We'll move, uh, I should have said this at the beginning, sorry, uh, the town manager is sick today. So we'll have a, maybe an expedited meeting, but certainly a truncated, um, agenda. He didn't leave any written report. Um, select board reports, Sue?
Some of this, we may not have answers to, since Phil's not here, but just to be on the record, so we don't lose track of them for the next meeting. Marty, you might know this first question, that darn flashing speed light is, so we verified the battery is out and.
No, the battery is not out. And, um, so I was given information, um, oh, but just a while back that, um, the, the battery. Or it shouldn't be left out for the winter. My husband actually. Couple of years ago did. When it wasn't working, um, he took it home and, um, had it all apart and he spoke to the people. The company that, that makes it, um, quite a bit when he was working on it and, um, they did not say. Anything like that, so I don't know if the original information was just incorrect, um, and.
That you can't leave it in during.
Yeah, because I mean, it's been working great. We've had some really cold weather.
I see Greenville's sign is, and I don't know if it's connected to electricity or if it's solar.
I don't know either. Um, I did, I was wondering if there was something different about that sign because that was, is always out there during the winter.
And Abbott's is new and it's connected then.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't want to have.
I, I'm thinking that may have been misinformed when, when we were told that, that it wasn't supposed to be out there.
Okay.
Is it an ordeal to remove the battery?
I don't think so. I, I don't think it's fun, but, um, you know. It has new locks and everything. It shouldn't, it should be less of an ordeal now because it's all been repaired, the locks have been replaced on it, so it's not, you know, such a thing about getting it open.
Right, right.
I remember that.
So.
I guess what I'm thinking is in, it might be better to take off the battery until we can confirm whether we can leave it out.
Okay, yeah. Um, I'll try to find out. I forget the name of the company, but I can probably find out and.
How much was that battery? It was like eight.
It was a lot, yeah.
Thousand, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'll, I'll try to find the name of the company and give them a call, just confirm.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
One more thing. All right, and. I, you probably don't know the status of the EV charging station.
Okay.
But just so we. Have it in our minutes, so for next time we won't forget.
Yeah.
And then the same for the community resilience grant. Um, I know the deadline was coming up in January, Bill had said. I don't know where he was on that.
I haven't heard anything.
That's pretty time sensitive. And if we need, I guess, another meeting to. Approve that, I'm not sure where we go with that.
To become a member? Is, is that what we're expecting?
We're already members, but he was supposed to, um, find out when the deadline for this next round of grants was and it was supposed to be in January and we won't be meet, meeting again until February, so I don't know.
Okay. We needed, there's a deadline for grant applications.
Yeah. And what he was going to submit it for.
Okay, um, and so, okay to have an extra meeting.
This next one you might know when we're ready.
Okay, ready.
Um, we talked about the, uh, ball field rental, uh, for the Overland, uh, two oh seven Overland. Do we know anymore?
Um, well, I, I did put that out there and I haven't heard back. He said that, um, he'd have to look into that and see how it is because he said they've never charged people for coming to the event. So between paying a fee to use the field and plus renting all the porta potties. Um, he was just gonna have to go and crunch some numbers and, um, that he would let me know. Um, he was just gonna have to go and crunch some numbers and, um, that he would let me know, but I haven't heard anything.
And you let him know that we agreed it was negotiable?
Um, I, I didn't put, I was waiting for him to come back with something. Um, if, if he comes back with a no, um, I would put that out there.
What would be reasonable for that?
Right, I, I could ask him that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good benefit.
Wasn't sure really if I should say that at first or, or not. So waffled on it, discussed it around the office and. And it was no. But yeah, if they come back and.
I'll bring you to, uh, with me to buy my next new car. Um, the fire department data, so Janie, I don't know if you saw what I emailed out. Um, and I just, there was on one of the time sheets, I think there were, uh, for December, there were some more called data. But, um, it didn't have the same breakdown that I have on a spreadsheet. So I don't know how we can get that specific data from the fire department and I can add it to the spreadsheet. So we have a whole year of twenty-three of, of call data in there. Um.
Are you just looking for towns and types of calls or is it more than that?
Types of calls, like, um, um, by town as well, like how many medical Monson had, how Lancher, Shirley. Um, what else? Vehicle accidents, um, and I, I didn't spread, uh, share the spreadsheet with you, but Bill can set. Um, yeah, and, and then my other question was that the fire department was going to get. Some data for, was it mine from our last meeting? So just in my recital that.
Um, I believe that he, that Ryan gave him that information.
Okay, great.
So he should be up there.
But a, as soon as I have December data, um, I can update those spreadsheets. And then whatever graphs we need to produce from that data, I, I can help do. And so we have a visual for our budget meetings. Okay, that was fire. And one last question, but Ken's not here.
Hey, sir.
Oh, you are. Hey, you're hiding back there. Um, is it okay if I ask owner of property? Can, do you know the status of the Tanny Hill, um, property down across from Sue Mees there?
I've been trying, but I don't, don't contact.
Do we, and, and I'm kind of confused because do, don't we have a name?
Well, now, but apparently they rigged on the loan. They haven't been able to contact bad on their most operating to make them do something.
So how do we find out who owns that property? Like, is there a tax?
We probably wouldn't know that. Uh, we don't get notified if banks foreclose on properties. Um, you know, we know if the taxes are behind or not, that, that's it, you know? And if a bank foreclosed on something, then they become responsible for the taxes. So they pay the taxes and that's, that's just it. Um, if they are a mortgage holder, they're an interested party anyway, so they will get a copy of the bill. So we don't really necessarily have that information. Um, I'm not sure.
Wouldn't be in the registry of deeds.
Possibly, yeah, we can get there.
Yeah, if there's a mortgage holder or anything like that, that would be in the registry.
It was papered for a while by a management company who said they didn't hear from anybody in a certain amount of time. They were going to take over and cut the lawn and fix the building. They contacted them and went back and forth and they said, well, Ben said not to do anything. So they drew the papers and any services they were going to do.
Like we're spinning our wheels on this one.
Yeah, um, I will make a note to check the registry.
Yeah, the owner of record will be telling in the registry and that's who the town goes after.
It's just been a long, long time. That's all I have.
Thanks, Judy?
Uh, no, you, you sent an email, um, regarding local railroad like flags and all stuff and Bill's not here. But, um, that's still going to be on our radar as far as speeding through that intersection and section of town. Um, I sent an email to the ad hoc fire truck committee that we just established last week. Um, we're going to start setting up a meeting. Um, I think we've got a good plan going forward as far as just like a deliberate, deliberate approach. Not to be deliberate as far as slow, but deliberate as far as making sure that each step that we have. Uh, establish any requirements, financing options, and then a full review about recommendation at the end. So, um, that's what, and then we'll start doing that as soon as we can get all the committee members ready to go for a meeting. That's, that's it.
Thanks. Um, the news for me tonight is that unfortunately, uh, I have to, unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, maybe not for others. But, um, I have to, uh, step down from the board. And, uh, the reason for doing so is that I'm starting a new job, which will require that I be out of town much more than, than has been the case in the past. Um, and so while I look forward to, to supporting the town's efforts and in ways that I can moving forward. Maybe if the new board, uh, would like to, I'd be happy to serve on the budget committee. Um, but, um, no, I just want to say thanks for, for its support and patience. And, um, and the community spirit that we've all had over the last five or so years that I've been, uh, in town government here. We have a really wonderful community that is, um, focused on making the town better tomorrow than it was yesterday. And, uh, we don't always agree on things, but we have accomplished a lot in the last years. And, uh, the momentum is definitely, uh, on our side. So I'm really excited to see, uh, where things go next. Um, and very fortunate to have been a part of the, the last chapter here. So, um, I'll give this letter to Marty for your records.
Very much. Sandra, thank you for holding us together.
Sure, yeah, it, it's hard to figure out like why someone will jump into local governance. You know, sometimes it's an urging of someone else. Sometimes you got time and you're, you're looking to improve things. Um, but you know, it, it can't be unnoticed that Tyler served at a very unique time. Um, when COVID hit, there are a lot more questions, not a lot of answers. And I think, um, it should be appreciated under which, uh, the timing in which he, um, served here. And, uh, you know, sometimes people say, if you're neutral, you're really in reverse. Uh, Tyler's always had a, um, growth oriented mindset, um, and focus on improving the town. I know sometimes that comes at a cost of having disagreements and uneasy conversations. But he always had the best interest of the town at heart. And I think, uh, that should be no, noticed and appreciated. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well said.
Uh, all right, the next item on our agenda is town committee reports, beautification.
Sandra, you want to take this away? I missed the meeting this week.
You did miss the meeting. We had a meeting. We talked about if the things we could do this year, including banners on the poles. I emailed you Sue about your piece of that, uh, depending on what that costs, there's some other ideas we have about. Um, moving our flower plantings a little farther north to hit in front of the gem and the, the library in that area around the bands, the, um, yeah, the bandstand. So beautification continues to try to beautify.
And I'll just add on to that. Um, I spent some time online today, uh, this morning, looking at some of the, um, the, uh, store, online stores. That sell to municipalities for decorative pole banners, you know, those, yeah, seasonal decorative pole banner, banners. Our biggest issue is, uh, we're a windy town, so they have special materials you have to consider and, and brackets. So I'm investigating that, Sandra.
Thank you, thank you.
Wind zone.
Wind zone, yeah.
Um, all right, rec committee.
Uh, we are going to meet, I think, next Thursday. Um, I think the initial plan was to do it the second Tuesday of every month, but I think the now standing meeting is a meet next Thursday. Um, but nothing, or is it, yeah, next Thursday. I think it's been, uh, this space has been, uh, reserved. So, um, there's been talk about taking over the, um, snowier days. But I think this is going to be a year of the handoff where the, uh, resident knowledge is just going to help the rec committee hand off to the future.
Super. Um, and then you gave an update on the fire trucks.
Yeah, sorry, anything additional to add to that?
Nope.
Yeah.
All right.
Tyler, this is an appropriate point to just update planning board.
Please do, yeah.
Um, we are in the process of writing the solo ordinance. We had a meeting on Tuesday, um, where we, um, I, I think made significant progress. And we have another meeting on the 12th Thursday and we should be able to take again towards that final stages of, of writing that ordinance. And then we'll be, we'll be on GGS.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
The first item of old business is the CEO report. So we have a written copy here. Um, Kent, anything additionally you'd like to share?
No.
All right.
And just a small run.
Very good, thank you. Uh, the next item is to vote on findings from the public hearing regarding Nineteenth Center Street. Um, oh, uh, we had our discussion. Uh, this is the point at which we, we take a vote on the matter. Uh, and continue to the next stage. We have the findings in the order printed here, which reflects the discussion we just had. That Mr. Dumpy, to, to your question earlier, there, there are, you know, timelines and steps et, et cetera that come next. So you'll get a copy of, of this as well. I will, uh, move that we find the building at Nineteenth Center Street, a dangerous building. And proceed, um, accordingly. Is there a second, second, is there any additional discussion? None? All in favor? The vote is three to zero? Is the next item of new business is to sign select board documents.
So I have three this evening. Um, first one is the, uh, just liquor license renewal for Lake Shore House. I did not mark where you need to sign, but there is a page.
Well, Judy, something about, um, on this. Words here.
I know, he was very proud.
I think we're learning.
Well, we appreciate not having to be our special staff.
The one that didn't have, uh.
Oh, it was just kind of running on the, wasn't, is it that one?
Here it is. We have this group, we're just saying entertain, but we don't have the actual receipts.
So these ones here were just pulled out of the folders. So what probably, because they weren't signed, Sue had signed them, but no one else did. Um, so what probably happened was, was they probably got pulled out and filed because I gave Jade the rest of them to file.
Gotcha.
So you remember signing those last, last month, I think?
And also this doesn't motor vehicle from staple to it, which is weird. This one? So this is the one that you showed me.
No, just the one in the middle there. That group of words.
Oh, this whole?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm going to say that that's going to happen, so. Yeah, try to find these. I bet you that is what happened. And the next thing is, uh, this is the, the contract for the septic field that we have to have. Uh, this is just the annual renewal of that contract. Um, price remains the same at eight hundred dollars a year.
This is just that we need to have a place in case we need it.
And then this one here is just, um, a cemetery deed, bothering Robert and Davis.
Um, is there something?
Yep.
Just send out.
Yeah.
On the, the lines.
You can have it.
But it's not long yet.
So what's, so now that you have resigned, was, is there a process or protocol or timeline?
Yeah, good question. Um, I don't actually know.
Didn't we, don't we have precedent as far as, didn't we have a select organ that resigned previously?
At, but he timed it with the town meeting.
Okay.
So I, I, the two, I think there's, either you can continue with two or you can have a special action, is my understanding. But I don't know all of it, any of it.
Look into that, look into that, planning board name as well at the same time. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Then I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Seven thirteen. Thanks, everybody.